So if we're all ready to go, call to order this regular meeting in the Beverly City Council Monday, May 18th, 2020. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Yeah.
And Guanci?
Here. Councilor Houseman, would you once again lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States,
the flag of America.
America, and to the republic,
the republic of Wichita.
of Wichita, one nation,
under God,
under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Houseman. You're getting very good at that. We really appreciate it.
It's all about the flag.
Okay, so what I have to do before every remotely held city council meeting, I have to read a statement. Confirming member access as a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I am confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Everyone can hear me. Introduction to the remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspended the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public participation, as we have two public hearings. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking has finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22. All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act on separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed in subcommittee, actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand, and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration, therefore, thereof, and a vote thereon. However, if the council may by majority vote order any matter pending before a subcommittee be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or and/or to be forthwith returned to the full council, and that's what we've been doing. So I'll ask Ms. Kent to take a roll call of all city councils, that we will vote out everything on the floor as we go through the meeting this evening. Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes. And whereas we have two public hearings tonight, I'll read the meeting ground rules for public hearings. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the microphone mute/unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or by pressing star six on your telephone keypad. Please reserve the chat function for technical difficulties and strictly the city council, not for public comment. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please state your name and affiliation before speaking. Regarding public comment, after members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote, Ms. Kent's favorite. Everybody good? Any questions or comments? We have a little time before our first public hearing at 7:15, so if nobody minds, I will take care of some council business. First, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our regularly held meeting, which was held remotely, on Monday, April 27th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, great, thank you. We'll go to communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Order number 105. Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request that you approve a budgetary transfer which will allow the city to pay down some existing debt. You may recall when my administration presented the finance plan for the police station, there were future actions that would be required to both reduce the total amount to be borrowed and to create capacity in the city's debt budget to cover the future police station debt payments. This transfer was presented as part of the plan at this time. We are seeking to transfer 567,000 from the long-term interest expense budget into the short-term principal budget. Both areas are within the debt section of the operating budget. This transfer will allow the city to then pay down an existing loan authorization for the parking kiosk project with a fund transfer into that project fund. The avoidance of borrowing for the kiosk project will create near-term capacity in the city's debt budget to begin layering in debt associated with the police station. Please initiate action at your next city council meeting by setting a public hearing. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Cahill, Mayor.
And I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for Monday, June 1st at 7:15 p.m.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Great. Roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes. Ms. Kent?
Council President, would you please restate the time and date of the meeting, of the public hearing, excuse me?
Monday, June 1st at 7:15 p.m.
Thank you.
All good. Thank you, Counselor.
Order number 6. Dear Honorable City Council, I'm pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $6,000 grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, the EOPSS Office of Grants and Research, to support the pedestrian and bicyclist safety grant program during fiscal year 2020. Funding was made possible by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. This grant supports the Beverly Police Department's pedestrian and bicycle safety program efforts. Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Cahill, Mayor.
I would entertain a motion to accept the grant on behalf of Mayor Cahill.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Kent, how about a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman? Feldman? Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
Feldman? I don't know. She might have got put out.
Kathleen? All right, motion carries eight to zero. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from His Honor, the mayor, and we'll entitle that, let will number that, late file 99A.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman? Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes. Ms. Kent, could you read that, please?
Dear Honorable City Council, I would like to read... Wait, you want 99, you want the mayor's one? I'm sorry. Hold on. I had that one on my phone because it was late.
You want me to read it? I have it in front of me.
You do? Yeah, could you? Please?
Yeah, I will. Why not? I love the sound of my own voice. Dear Honorable Council, it is my understanding that you seek to appoint the city clerk, Lisa Kent, to act as the clerk of city council committees, for which he would receive a stipend. Mass. General Laws Chapter 41 and 191 provides that notwithstanding the conflict of interest law, a city clerk who also serves in any other position for such city may, in addition to any compensation to which she may be entitled, he or she may be entitled as such city clerk, receive such additional compensation for such additional services as the mayor and city council may provide. In response to your request that I made today, I am providing this letter I am providing this letter to inform you that in light of the fact that there is not currently an assistant clerk, I am supportive of your decision to have the city clerk perform that function. And it's signed sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Cahill, Mayor. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Counselor Rand?
Nope. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make the comment that I'm really grateful for Ms. Kent's service to the city, especially, I mean, nobody could have seen a pandemic coming, but she's handled the operations of the clerk's office with expertise and grace, and I think it's very fitting that she would also be compensated for doing two jobs at once. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rand. Counselor Ames?
I concur with Counselor Rand 100%. And as we have a national election coming up in November, I was just hoping at some time we could have a conversation as to whether it's we ought to be looking to hire someone to help in the clerk's office.
Thank you.
Counselor Houseman?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to also commend Ms. Kent. She brings such a buoyant spirit to the job. She is just so positive in her outlook towards all the different hurdles that she and the council have had to face since she took the job right at the right at the start of the outset of the coronavirus. So I just want to commend her and thank her for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Houseman. And just to follow up Counselor Ames's question, Ms. Kent decided, along with Jerry Carey and Brian Ailes, that she would be able to run the office without the assistant clerk position. But I think that there's a plan to advertise that position come the end of June, so that we will have an assistant city clerk in FY '21. So that said, I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Gratefully, yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes. And now it's 7:15, so we will go to our first public hearing, and then we'll pick up our regular agenda after the public hearing with communications, some other city offices, and board. Our first public hearing is scheduled for 7:15. It's on order number 104. Ms. Kent, could you please read that order?
Orders of the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, May 18th, 2020 at 7:30 p.m. Remote on Google Meet, livestream on BevCam relative to the order that the city appropriates an additional sum of $1,400,000 to pay costs of cleaning CCTV inspection and cement lining of approximately 6,850 linear feet of 12-inch cast iron water mains and the relaying and renewing 1,050 linear feet of 6-inch cast iron water mains, including furnishing and installing all valves, hydrants, fittings, coupling the pavement, including the pavement of all jobs incidental and related, therefore, to meet said appropriation. The treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said sum under Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Number 7, or any other enabling authority that the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. Any premium received by the City of promiscuity, if it was approved by this order, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost pursuant of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount of authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. And this was in the Salem Union News on Thursday, May 7th.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And with everything else financial, we always refer to our Finance Director, Brian Ailes, and Mr. Ailes is here with us tonight. Mr. Ailes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, good evening. That was a little bit of a multiple of an order, but basically what it says in short is that we, as the city, are looking to borrow an additional $1.4 million to continue and complete the work of relining the water main along Cabbage Street all the way down to the bridge, and some gates and valves along the way going into the side streets. I am here this evening with Commissioner Collins, and we're happy to get any specific questions you may have about the work. I will add before I open it up for questions that this is a water fund project, meaning that it is contained entirely within the enterprise fund. Therefore, any debt service associated with this project would be paid out of the water fund through assessment of rates, which users of the water supply system ultimately pay.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Before we go to questions from the from members of the city council, a couple of things. One, if you're not speaking, or I'm not calling, or I haven't called, and you please leave your microphones on mute. And I think that we should hear from Commissioner Collins before we open up questions. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for having me here tonight, City Council. What we're looking for tonight is the ability to continue the, what has become a very complicated project for us. A few years ago, we undertook a similar project with actually a larger scope in terms of linear feet of pipe out in Centerville, but the big difference there was we had a lot of time to plan it. And out there, the world is pretty finite. We know what to expect, and there hasn't been a lot of change over time. This project here, we, it was the genesis as we received the Complete Streets Grant late last year, and which we didn't expect to receive, and that spurred on the redevelopment of the Cabbage Street corridor. We took a quick look at, you know, doing that and spending, realizing we're going to spend a fairly substantial amount of money on the streetscape of Cabbage Street. As you would imagine, it doesn't make sense to undertake a project like first addressing the utilities beneath the roadway so that we don't have to go back and dig it up later on. We looked, and one of the standouts we had up there was the water main. It had been a very reliable water main for us. It does not break in very often, which makes it an excellent candidate for a cement line project. So, given a very short line, in-house, we turned, we put together plans and specifications to hire a contractor. Without, you know, we did not have the benefit of an outside engineering firm, because we didn't have the time to go out and hire an outside engineering firm. And this is the kind of work we typically do in-house as well. At least the engineering of it. So we put together plans and specs, and went out the bid, and we hired a contractor. Since that time, we've been diligently working. But in the nature of the downtown area, where buildings have been torn down and rebuilt, and buildings have been moved, and the records have turned out to be not nearly as good like, so we've run into quite a few changes in the field and surprises. And then there's been a little bit of scope creep here and there, where unnecessary improvement, expand the job. And in order to complete the rest of the work in the manner that we see fit, we're asking for the increase the authorization by 1.4 so that we can, we, this is it's going to additional work. This isn't we are adding scope to the job, but we believe this is very value-added scope where it's important to this is the first time that anything significant has happened to the water main on Cabbage Street in over 100 years. And we are cleaning up quite a bit of problems as we find them. We'll be much better served by it. There'll be better fire action. We'll have, we'll be able to respond to any future water breaks, because one of the things that's always giving my water department nightmares is the lack of control valves out on the street. When we have an issue on Cabbage Street, we would have to shut down several blocks at a time because we had so few valves out there. At the end of this job, we'll have very, very high level of control over the entire corridor, and all of the hydrants are being renewed. And as we're going, our plan is to replace all of the water services in the entire corridor. So this will be another way where each of the homes will will get rid of all of our old iron water services, which are a liability and do break over time. So like I said, this is additional scope that has been driven out of the fact that, quite frankly, our records aren't that good, and even when they are good, we've seen the situations inside the buildings, which there's been some real head scratchers out there, where spent a late evening one night in Ganti, not in the dining room or in the bar, but in the basement, trying to sort out the plumbing there as they had a function above us, because each sink and each toilet in the building was fed from a different service. So once the once the pipes leave the city main and get into the building, there's all sorts of wild things happen there because of changes in ownership over time, and, you know, somebody owned the whole building at one time, and the building had broken up into individual units, and and the plumbing's a real mess, and it took, you know, the project would be very difficult to sort out. But by the end of it, we'll have much better records, and the water main will be in pristine condition, and this is an improvement to the quality of the water, the control of the water, and the fire supply downtown. So it's very worthwhile. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins. Counselor Rotundo has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Collins, just out two questions. One of them, I know you don't have a true timeline yet, but do you have an idea of when the water project heading towards the bridge may possibly be wrapping up? And make no mistake, obviously, you know, I have a business down there, and this is the perfect time to be doing this work with the COVID virus. But do you have any indication of when the project may possibly be done? And then the second thing is, you know, like you said, as you know, there are some unforeseen things that have happened and popped up, and you're trying to really plow through it. Do you foresee that going forward on this, that you may possibly come across more unforeseen things, that you may have to come back for additional money? And I know it's coming out of the Water Enterprise Fund, but is there anything else that you may or may not see?
Well, first, let me say, we, this is something we are loathe to do. We are typically very estimating, and it's, and one of the things we really don't like to do is go back to the well, no pun intended, for additional funds, because, you know, that obviously, like, we didn't plan very well. I will, just like I noted, you know, this is a very short timeline project. That sounds like a nuisance, and kind of it is. But it was also very complicated. So anyway, having said that, we are very confident that we're in a position now where we know everything there is to know about the project, that all of the unknowns have already been dug up. So we're just in the put-it-all-back-together phase. And so, no, we're very confident that we are, we will be able to complete the job within the budget, within this estimate. And then we have roughly four weeks' worth of work left to go. But what you'll start to see very quickly is we're working from the end of it towards the bridge, where we'll be able to start picking up some of that that's on the roadway within a week or two. So it'll, we'll start to visibly wrap up shortly, and we should, we hope to be complete in a little, roughly a month from now.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. Counselor Feldman, please?
Yes, thank you. My question, I think, is for Mr. Ailes. Would you, you, though, I just want to be clear that this is, you said this is self-contained within the enterprise fund? So it's a loan within that fund for the current year? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, pretty much. The
Mr. Ailes?
The enterprise fund itself is a self-contained unit, and when we authorize projects within or to support those enterprise funds, they, the debt service associated with those ultimately get paid through the operating budget of those enterprise funds. So there's almost like a brick wall between the enterprise fund's activities and the general fund activities.
Gotcha. Okay. And then the, and so the projection is that the operating within that, the operating fund will, the next year, we're not foreseeing changes in the budget or the rate that the operating expense will be and billing of constituents, right? Is that correct?
Yes, fair question. So the way we try to manage both the water and the sewer enterprise funds is that we try to look at it as a combined rate. And though one, one of the entities may go up in terms of an operating budget, we try to, try to buffer that with the other one coming down, so that we try to maintain a consistent combined rate. So although this loan authorization may push up some costs within the water enterprise fund, we know that we have relief that we can count on in the sewer enterprise fund, so that the combined rate can be held harmless for at least the near future one to two fiscal years.
Great. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Feldman. What I'm going to do right now is, because I know there are people online, the non-elected officials, that would like, have, have an interest in our next public hearing. So I would entertain a motion to recess this current public hearing on the water loan until 8:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
And how about a roll call, Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes. And now I'll ask, Ms. Kent, could you read our next public hearing? I don't have my gavel, so I can't hit my desk. But on order number 103, please.
Orders of the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, May 18th, at 7:30 p.m. Remote on Google Meet, livestream on BevCam relative to the Community Preservation Committee, Seventh Round, CPA Project Funding Recommendations Phase One. And this is in the newspaper on Thursday, May 7th.
And Ms. Kent, I think that for those watching, I want to say at home, or that want to speak tonight, we should read the letter that was sent to us in April. Do you want to do that, or you want me to do it for you?
Up to you.
I'm giving you the option to opt out.
All right, I'll opt out. You can read it.
Thanks. Dear President Guanci and members of the City Council, the Community Preservation Committee began its review of the seventh round funding applications earlier this year. That process was interrupted by the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. We are currently experiencing and resulting in the suspension of public meetings, hearings, and other business typically engaged in by local boards and commissions. The CPC resumed its meeting schedule remotely last week and voted on April 16th, 2020, unanimously recommend funding for three of the projects before it. The CPC plans to review the remaining refund, funding requests under consideration in May, Phase 2. The CPC felt strongly that it was important to resume the review process as soon as possible so that the project proponents could be informed as to whether or not they would receive funding and then proceed accordingly during this very uncertain time. We wish to thank the applicants for their interest in pursuing CPA funds and for their patience as we found a new path through this process. The three projects that the Community Preservation Committee is recommending to the Beverly City Council are funding for. Restoration of the stone stairs connecting Gillis Park to Pleasant View Beach with a funding recommendation of $22,635. That comes from the CPA category's historic preservation and recreation. Number two, restoration of the vaulted ceiling and rose window in the lobby of the Cabot Performing Arts Center with the funding recommendation of $275,000. CPA category, historic preservation. Finally, the replacement of the failing roof shingles of the Roger Conan Apartments located at 77 Sawyer Road and owned by the Beverly Housing Authority for $96,000. And that comes out of the CPA category, community housing. The CPC is pleased to submit the enclosed recommendations of the three, Round 7, Phase 1, project applications for a total of $393,635 for CPA funding. All recommended projects are subject to the terms and conditions imposed by the Community Preservation Committee as noted below and through anticipated grant agreements or memorandums of understanding or other documents as is appropriate. The following conditions are common to all recommended projects. One, projects financed with Community Preservation Act funds must comply with all applicable state and municipal requirements. CPA funds are administered and dis- reimbursed by the City of Beverly. Two, project oversight, monitoring, and CPA fund control will be carried out as required in project memorandums of understanding slash grant agreements or other such documents. Three, the CPC will require project status updates from recipients and backup invoices for any CPA funds, fund disbursement requests. And four, all projects will be required to credit CPA funding in their promotional material and where appropriate on exterior signage. Applications for all projects are available online via the Community Preservation Committee's webpage. Requests for copies of these documents or any questions may be also submitted to Denise DeChamps, staff for the CPC via email at deeddechamps@beverlyma.gov. As you are aware, pursuant to Mass General Law, a public hearing must be scheduled prior to any City Council vote is taken on the attached order. And that's signed by the Community Preservation Committee, whose chair is Marilyn McCrory, and she is here with us this evening. So whether we want to hear, I know, Mr. Ailes, we always ask you about finances. Maybe you want to do a brief introduction and then we could hear from Ms. McCrory before we go to questions?
Sure. I mean, this is a typical request, which comes from the CPC. I'd just turn it over to Mrs. McCrory to give a little more details around the projects. And if there's any financial questions, I'm happy to answer any of them.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Ms. McCrory, thank you for being here this evening. You're on. Unmute yourself. There you are.
All right. Thank you, President Guanci and members of the council. I, I'm Marilyn McCrory of the Community Preservation Committee. We, I don't really have too much to add to the letter that you read, President Guanci, except to note that we started this round in November. We received six applications this round. It's our seventh round of funding of CPA projects. We also had one out-of-cycle application, you may remember, back in the early fall for the Beverly Housing Authority. City Council approved funding for that. And ultimately, I think the Housing Authority won a large state grant to complete that project. So we, as noted in the letter, we, we, or is not noted in the letter, but we usually try to get our recommendations to City Council in, in May so that you can act on them before your budget season begins, but we were delayed by the COVID-19 pandemic. So we had to cancel a meeting. We, therefore, we are breaking our recommendations into two parts, as noted in the letter. And so what you have before you tonight is three projects that we've already reviewed and made some recommendations for funding. I'm happy to answer questions on any of the projects. Denise DeChamp, our staff, the able staff person to the committee is here. And I believe one of the, a representative of one of the proponents is here, Bob Stonem, I think, from the Cabot.
Bob Stonem, Jim Dawson, Kimberly is here, Ballard. Why don't we do this? Why don't we take it in one project at a time? That way we don't get confused. So does any member of the City Council have any questions to do with the request from the Beverly Housing Authority to replace the failing roof at the Roger Conan Apartments? I have Council Rotundo, Council Flaherty, Council Flaherty. Councilor Rotundo, who would you like? Is your question about the Roger Conan Apartments? No. Council Flaherty, you have a question about the apartments?
Yes.
Yes, Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
I just want a clarification. On one of the sheets, it talks about the categories coming from community housing. And on page four or five, it talks about coming from the historic preservation. What category is it actually coming from?
We, the funding will come from community housing and in that case, from what's called the general reserve. Perhaps Brian Ailes can speak to that, but we, each, each funding cycle, 10% of the funds that we collect is set aside for each of the three CPA categories, so housing, historic preservation, and open space. Anything that's beyond that 10% is put in something called the general reserve. So when we basically run out of, out of a balance in one category, such as community housing, we pay the balance for a, a project out of the, the remaining funds, which are in the general reserve.
Right. Thank you. And I just want to help educate me on one other piece. When you're, when we're giving away community housing money, for like, for example, for the Housing Authority, is that for, allowed for rehab or is that supposed to be just for new construction or can you actually give money for re- rehabilitation for housing?
There, in all of the categories, there, there's what are called allowable uses. And these are determined by the law and the Department of Revenue. And rehabilitation and restoration is an allowable use in certain categories, including housing. What, in general, CPA funds are not supposed to be used for what's called maintenance. They're, they're supposed to be used for the allowable uses, which can include acquisition, which would be new housing, such as we funded in the past. It can be used for, though, for rehabilitation and restoration and, and activities.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the roof said Roger Conan? Let's check my chat. No. So let's move on to the next project, which is the restoration of the stone stairs connecting Gillis Park to Pleasant View Beach. Any questions from members of the City Council? Councilor Rand, War II? No, you're good with this?
Yes. Wait, that, I tried to type me. Sorry, President Guanci.
Oh, okay.
Mine is more just a comment, of course, to take the opportunity to sing the praises of the War II Civic Association. They're really, they've put in a lot of effort to get the GAR Hall cleaned up through the CPC funds. And so now I'm glad to see another small project coming through, but the, the grant applications are, are as easy as they can be, but they're certainly not simple. So it takes a lot of effort and I also always feel great about the CPC's recommendations because the projects are so well-vetted through that process, that very comfortable with what they're putting in front of us. Recommend attending one of their meetings virtually if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. They do great work on behalf of the city, all volunteer. Councilor Ames, you have a comment on the Gillis Park project?
Yes, just a quick question. First, I'd like to say, this is my first time going through this funding and I'm really impressed with the projects and the thoroughness. And I think this funding generally adds so much to the city and our quality of life here. I just curiously was trying to understand, I know it looks like the other two grants were funded like 50% and it seems like the stairs, I just want to, I just would like to understand how that works. Looks like that's pretty close to 100% grant. It's a much smaller sum, but just if you could please educate me on that.
Sure, I'd be happy to, Councilor Ames. The, the total project cost you see in that second column is the total cost of the project. So if there's a, if there's a gap between what the CPA is providing and the total cost, then that means that the proponent is coming up with like the other funds. So in this case, the War II Civic Association, a volunteer organization, that is, is, is not, is providing some, some funds, but, but isn't able to come up with much else. So that's, that's, does that answer your questions? In the case of the, one of the other projects, the Cabot, there's, they're getting some grants from other sources or seeking grants and fundraising and that sort of thing. So their, the CPA's contribution to that project is, is, is much less than the total cost.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. And how about any councilors that would like to ask any questions about the work being done at the Cabot Performing Arts Center? Councilor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Really mine's more of a comment. As I've gone through the CPC process a little over a year ago, I can commend the process. It is, Councilor Rand actually said it very well. It's not a hard application, but it is very thorough and it is well-vetted. In regards to the Cabot project, I couldn't support it 100% more. It's, as a business owner downtown, it's definitely a huge factor on the industries down there by, you know, attracting these shows that are incredible. So I just want to really put 100% support behind, especially the Cabot project. All three projects seem very worthwhile, but you know, where the Cabot is looking for a larger sum, it's a worthwhile project. It really does help with the downtown area. And that's all I really have, is just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rotundo. Council Flaherty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would echo those of other City Councilors. This project is what the CPA money is being used for and should be used for. It's an excellent project, is well worth the money, and we're very thankful that they had the foresight to kind of look into this, for this money because not only it helps the downtown, but helps the whole city of Beverly. So thank them, thank everybody for doing this and making this happen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Councilor Hausmann?
Yes, I just wanted to, at the outset, indicate that I filed, a number of years ago, actually filed a disclosure related to any matters relating to the Cabot because I was so involved as one of the founders in, in trying to get, bring the Cabot back from being, being closed. It was always envisioned as both an anchor for the downtown economy and a spark plug for the downtown economy. And this particular project at the Cabot really helps, helps the organization complete its vision of bringing the Cabot Theater back to, you know, back to its original glory. And I think it'll only add as the years go on to the contribution that the Cabot is able to make to the downtown economy for Beverly. Not with, I mean, and, and setting even that aside, just the Cabot Theater as an institution and an iconic building in downtown Beverly really is important and distinctive. And this will, when this window and the area around the lobby is, is complete, it'll really transform the entrance to the Cabot. So I think it's, I think it's money very well spent for the taxpayers of Beverly.
Thank you, Council Hausmann. Council Freydees? Did you nod off again?
I think Council Freydees, you may be muted.
He's not on his, he's home. He's not in Florida. There he is.
I, no, I just want to say, I can't add anything more to the wonderful nature of how this incredible institution represents our city, but I must tell you the number of influential calls that I've received in the six or seven years we've been doing this. This was a very strong organization, a who's who of Beverly, who are all here networking, including one person who's on the line, I can see them, whose brother-in-law was sent to my front door. And I was really shocked, but we had such a great chat with our mask on. So I'm going to wholeheartedly endorse this as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Everybody good from the City Council? Okay, I'll open it up to members of the, member of the public. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on the first project, the roofs at the Roger Conan Apartments? Are there anybody, is anybody on the line that would like to speak about the restoration of the stone stairs connecting Gillis Park to Pleasant View Beach? And finally, is there anybody on the line that would like to speak about the Cabot Performing Arts Center? I will go to Jim Dawson, James Dawson. Mr. Dawson, could you please state your name and address for the record? And do I have to unmute you or you can unmute yourself?
I think I unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Council President and members of the City Council. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to, to listen to the very favorable comments I just heard. I certainly appreciate them. Clearly, I'm here to speak in favor of the Cabot Performing Arts Center and I will be respectful of your time limit and try to be as concise as I can be. The Cabot Performing Arts Center is a nonprofit that Councilman Hausmann knows very well. It was established six years ago. He was integral to establishing the Cabot Performing Arts Center. And the Cabot, I think, has been very impactful and a real asset to the city of Beverly and the surrounding region. It gives people a chance to meet friends. It gives family and kids a place to go that's safe, where they can forget about the troubles of the day. And we've, we've tried very hard to invest the money we've been able to raise so far into making the Cabot Theater a safe environment and a comfortable environment. We started by looking at the fire suppression system and the, and the roof and the fire escapes. And, and then we had to look at the seats because the seats were not very comfortable after having been used for a number of years, decades. But then we continued on and put in a new HVAC system. And, and now we're at a point where we want to restore the lobby and restore the rose window and make it a real gem. As some of you know, certainly Councilman Hausmann knows, there were 20,000 such theaters built in the 1920s. built in the 1920s. Only 200 exist today. And we've been very successful raising money to, to improve the building, but as time goes on, it gets more difficult to raise money. The community has been exceedingly supportive, but we've already put about $4 million into the building, four to four and a half million, and we still have some more money to raise. This project, the lobby, is about $650,000, but if you add the elevator we're going to put in for access, for ADA access, it's well over $1 million. So any support we can get from the city would be greatly appreciated, and I'll stop there. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, but we very much appreciate the support of the CPA committee and, and the comments I've heard from the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Just your address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lifelong resident of Beverly, currently reside at 6 Waldemar Avenue.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to make a comment on this project? Public hearing. I know not you, Counsel Hausman. I want, I want, member of the public first.
Yeah, that's right.
Everybody is good. All right, we'll go to Counsel Hausman. Counsel Hausman, you're up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted, wanted to clarify my, and really complete my disclosure, that notwithstanding my previous involvement with the Cabot Theater, that I feel like my vote this evening can be made without, without bias in terms of, you know, notwithstanding my previous involvement with the Cabot as an organization before it took its present form. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hausman. Last chance for members of the public. Okay, I just want to make a quick statement. As somebody that spent the last 35 years, every day on Cabot Street, I've seen the good times and the bad times, and it's amazing what the restoration of the Cabot Theater has brought to, brought to downtown Beverly. Everybody, everybody has benefited from it, and the fact that Mr. Collins and his staff and the mayor are doing so much work downtown, the sidewalks, the streets, the new lighting, it's definitely going to be a place to go. And where else in the world can you be a sandwich maker and have Ms. Dionne Warwick come in for lunch? Quite an amazing day at Super Sub, and of course, it was the day that I wasn't there. But they support everybody in the community, people that go to the Cabot, people that perform at the Cabot, and the members of the Cabot Board themselves. It's just amazing, we're lucky to have you all. So hearing no further questions or comments, I'm going to close this public hearing, and then we are going to vote on each project individually. And Counsel Hausman, you let me know that you're comfortable voting on the Cabot project. So hopefully, all the votes will be nine to zero. So Ms. Kent, are you with me?
I'm with you.
All right, so we will start with the first vote, if you're ready to go.
Restoration of stone stairs connecting Gillis Park to Pleasant View Beach with a funding recommendation for $22,635. Category, CPA category Historic Preservation and Recreation. That's project number R-7-6.
I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Ron Hutter looking for that second on TV.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes. That passes nine to zero. Ms. Kent, the next project, please.
Project number R-7-4, restoration of vaulted ceiling and rose window in the lobby of the Cabot Performing Arts Center with a funding recommendation for $275,000 from the CPA category Historic Preservation.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Second. Roll call, Ms. Kent.
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
And wholeheartedly yes. That passes nine to zero. And our final project.
Final project is R-7-5, replacement of the failing roof shingles of the Roger Conan Apartments located at 77 Sawyer Road and owned by the Beverly Housing Authority for $96,000, $9600,000, CPA category Community Housing.
Great, $96,000. A motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
And yes. So that's it, all three projects have been funded. As I look through the people that are in attendance, I know a number of them are from the Cabot. I see Kimberly Ballard has been here watching, Jill Davidson, James Dawson, Bob Stonem, and anybody else, thank you. Mr. Champs, we want to thank you publicly for all you do for the CPC Committee, and Marilyn McCrory, you're amazing, you've been doing it for so long, and we really truly appreciate your service. So, that said, that's done, so I would...
Thank you, Counsel Guanci, and thank you, members of the council.
You got it, thank you. I would entertain a motion to return to our next public hearing, no, to our public hearing order number 104, the loan authorization for the $1.4 million ongoing water main work around downtown.
So moved.
Second.
And how about a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
And yes, and where we...
Counsel, President, can I say something?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I forgot to add that budget analyst Jerry Perry also sent a memo to all of you for this, and he wanted me to make sure, yeah, that you guys...
And he's here anyway, we're going to hear from him before we take a vote anyway.
Right.
Unless he left, he's still here. Okay. So where are we at? We were asking questions to either Mr. Collins or Mr. Ailes. Do any members of the city council have additional questions on this one? Counselor Ames. I know you're out there.
I can see Counsel Ames talking, but Counsel Ames, I think you're still on mute.
There, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Collins and Mr. Ailes for coming down and explaining this project to us. I have a few questions. So from the former, our former conversation, Mr. Collins, you believe that we will, this entire project will be wrapped up, including paving, in approximately one month? Was that your...
Yeah, the trench, the trenches will be paved, we won't, where the road paving will be undertaken at a date, you know, like actual curb-to-curb road pavement, at a future date, particularly as you look at the, the mayor and a large group of the business discussing exactly how to complete the road paving between Pond and A and B Burger. Now, since they're starting to, you know, the, the cloud is lifting a little bit, we are trying to be sensitive to their needs and not go out there and start finish paving work. The rest of the job, the, will be left with trench pavement, you know, those, there's small excavations throughout the job, as I'm sure anyone who's driven the group knows, and those will be paved, you know, the, right now, there's the, many of them, and steel plates on others, and those will all be paved. And then, yeah, so the whole job will be picked up in roughly a month.
So how much of sidewalk-to-sidewalk paving are you going to do, and how long, what, how long a period of time do you think that will take finished, understanding that you're not exactly sure of the calendar?
Right now, the only, the only section that we're looking at doing curb-to-curb pavement is between Pond Street, Street, or Bow, however you want to call it, within the Complete Streets project. Exactly what we do, and that, we had planned on full depth where we excavate the entire road base, get rid of the rest of the cobblestones and drain tracks, trolley tracks in the corridor, and put down new base and binder and top in that section. Given, like I said, we're right on the dawn of these businesses opening back up, we're exploring something I don't prefer to do from a technical standpoint, but, you know, just going in there, grind and overlay that section, postpone a full-depth reconstruction to a later date, just because it'll be so much less disruptive to the businesses. We're going to see where the businesses are. The rest of the road would be, the rebuilding of Cabot Street, there's at least three phases we've identified, the phase you see now, then maybe a subsequent phase that starts at Pond Street and goes to the north to roughly up, then a third phase which go from Bow Street and go towards Salem to somewhere vicinity of, say, Central, somewhere in that stretch. Those are, you know, three identified streetscape phases that we've come up with at this time, those have to be funded in future, future years, so those wouldn't get full reconstruct...
So, thank you, I, I think it, I could, I think it's wise to try to take a look at just grinding and adding a top layer at this point. I know that even last summer, a lot of those Cabot Street businesses had some significant impacts, and I would assume the budget impacts are important, too. I was also curious, and so, so it's a month to get the, the, this project finished, the paving, you're not sure how long it will take for the, the complete streets or the, the down, the Cabot sidewalk area, is that a month of paving, do you think, to, to, if you grind down and pave, or is that quicker?
It's, on that, what, what we're trying to decide is what's going to be the least impactful, whether or not we could just go in there now and do a little bit of trench, you know, clean up the trench a little bit, because, you know, a lot of it, we assumed, because that was the plan, that we would come in and rip it all out, so the trenches aren't that pretty, it's a pretty tough road to drive right now. But if we could get in there and dress up the trenches a little bit, could we survive throughout the summer, work with the businesses and say, what is the least impactful time to be out there for you? Like, just say, for instance, don't do anything at all until maybe the fall, and maybe we pick like late September, when everyone's hopefully back in school and back at work, and, and the businesses maybe have slowed down a little bit, maybe the weather's not quite as good to be outside, so the foot traffic's down, then we could go in, if we were going to cold plane and overlay the road, at least a two-week process, not working every day, you know, that, but, but there are, you know, this, there's two, there's a day finishing it for removing the surface, and there's a day for paving, where the road will be essentially shut down, but not the entire thing all the day, the whole time. But in between there, there'll be some adjusting of manholes and things like that. So it's at least a two-week process. If we, if we were to do the full depth, it's, you know, you know, again, not every day, but it's probably more like a month-long process. It doesn't mean the road will be shut down for a month, but there's more steps involved, and there's more work involved, so it takes a little bit more time.
Thank you, thank you for that.
It's a better, it's a better product in the end, though.
Yep, I understand, thank you very much. And in terms of the budget, including the first loan monies and these second $1.4 million, is there any other money, is this all first, just water main dollars, or is there also paving in there? I, I would like to just understand from both of you a little more about the actual budget and what that budget is made up of, just for my understanding.
This, these, this loan authorization is just for the water main contractor and the work that they're performing. The streets, the streetscape work, the between Pond and Abbott Street, Bow Street, is totally separate, partly funded by a Complete Streets grant, and the remainder is funded out of our Chapter 90 program with, with state funds. We haven't, we haven't committed, we don't have funds committed to pave anything other than the stretch between Pond and Bow Street at this time. So the rest of it will just be trench pavement for now.
So was the original, I think, believe 2.3 million, was that all water main work as well?
Yes.
Okay, so this is just water main work, it is not, it's got nothing to do with the sidewalks or really the paving or anything else.
That's right. Yeah, no, the sidewalk, we're, we are, we are tracking very much on budget with the sidewalk project.
Great, great. And then, one last question really for Mr. Ailes in terms of how we're funding this, and if you could just explain to me how you got to this point, given the cash that does exist in the Water Enterprise Fund, and just, and, and don't get me wrong, I, I think that this is a wise move by the city for a number of reasons, but if you could just explain how you got there.
Are you referring to why we're requesting a loan order?
Yes.
Yeah, so as with all of our budgets, we take a long look in terms of timeframe when we make any proposal to the city council for, for funding. In this instance, we layer not only this project, but we have other projects that will eventually make its way to, you know, this council or maybe a subsequent council to, to be funded. So what we try to do is we try to layer and stagger the costs in a way that prevent any spikes or drastic dips in the rates, because we want to try to maintain a fairly consistent rate so that the users can plan and know what they're going to be charged for the use of their water in sewer. So we basically offset, like I said earlier, the various projects between sewer, between water, to try to buffer any spikes in rates. We do, as you alluded to, have a fund balance that exists. How we have used that over the last two to three fiscal years, I can't recall the three, but at least the last two, we have used that fund balance, and we will in the coming year, to infuse that money into the operating budget before it comes before you for approval, in an effort to keep those rates suppressed. And so we do that so that, again, there aren't any major spikes in the overall rate. But anytime we come to a large project, something of this scope, where we're talking $3.7 million, that's a little bit too much for any enterprise fund to absorb in one fiscal year. So we spread it out over multiple fiscal years. Yes, there are some interest costs associated with that, but it's a much more manageable expected rate by doing it that way.
And well, I understand that, you know, compared to the general fund, this is apples and oranges, I, I, you know, they are Beverly apples and Beverly oranges, so I think the concept of trying to preserve some cash is a good, is, is a good way to look at it right now.
Yeah, I think the difference, the difference in the enterprise funds as opposed to the general fund is, with an enterprise fund, you're generating a product effectively, and whoever uses the product pays to use that product. So in terms of volatility and fluctuation in expected revenues, it's a much less risky So in terms of volatility and fluctuation in expected revenues, it's a much less risky, um, or less volatile revenue source over the enterprise funds. Whereas on the general fund, you know, because we've been having these conversations, there's a lot more, um, volatile and susceptible areas that can affect, uh, how much revenue the city's bringing in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Ames. Great questions and thank you, Mr. Ailes, for your explanations. And I will go to Counselor, uh, James Dawson, is not a city counselor, Counselor Frady.
Well, thanks very much, Commissioner Collins. I know you guys are out there working pretty hard on a whole bunch of projects. I'm sure you've, uh, with the size of that project, I was surprised down on, uh, Congress and with the waterfront redevelopment, I'm sure you've anticipated water demand down there as you're doing all this work, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, the water mains are really, the, what we size them for is for fire flow, which provides many factors of safety in terms of domestic flow. So first and foremost, we're looking at, uh, the ability to fight a fire, particularly in a, in a, in a high, high fire load area like Ward Two, um, the downtown, um. So, uh, there's a, this project goes a long way to achieving that goal. Um, generally, the pipes are adequately sized, uh, but we've, by cement lining them, we've greatly increased the carrying capacity of the same pipe. Those two, the two main factors we look at is the pipe reliable, has it, does it have a history of breakage? And is it adequately sized if it was clean? If it is, then we choose to cement line it. Uh, if it's a smaller pipe, we'll choose to, um, like we did on Haskell Street, that was a six-inch pipe. We did some hydraulic modeling and determined a 12-inch pipe would suit that area much better, so we relayed that pipe with a larger one.
All set, Counselor Frady? Okay, Counselor Hausman, please.
Uh, yes, I'm not sure if this question goes to Mr. Perry, Mr. Ailes, or Mr. Collins. Um, so let me, uh, allude first to the memo that, uh, Mr. Perry wrote to the council related to the financing of this, uh, where he sort of modeled a, a 30-year fixed interest rate of 3%, I think it was the number, um, and how that would affect i- in a, in a marginal way at a very small, uh, amount. Uh, the water sewer rate that Mr. Ailes was talking about keeping level or, you know, on, on a fairly level course over a long period of time. So my question has to do with, I, I think, I, I support this project. I think it's a good investment. I think, uh, it, it makes a lot of sense as the way it's been described. My question is for future planning, if we're making this incremental, uh, increase, uh, assuming the sort of the financial, the financing scenario that Mr. Perry laid out, um, what other sort of capital improvement projects, uh, are, are in the city's sights, uh, that could down the road, three years, two years, five years, um, also impact the water sewer rate? So we're increasing a little bit now. Are there other increases that you foresee down the road? Because at least under the scenario, uh, for financing, Mr. Perry laid out, this is, this would be a 30-year period. So I'm, I'm trying to look 30 years down the road, uh, or at least realistically, a realistic amount, 30 years, uh, towards that 30-year, uh, horizon and say, what are the kinds of things are going to be coming that would also incrementally affect the, 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 uh, the water sewer rate? So that's my question.
Why don't we go right to Mr. Perry? Uh, I know that he's not visiting. It's his memorandum that he sent us that Counselor Hausman has a question on. Mr. Perry?
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the council. Um, yeah, uh, that's a great question, uh, Counselor Hausman. Um, it's all part of, uh, the, the work done by the administration for capital improvement planning. Uh, as, as Mr. Ailes already indicated, they try to smooth it out, uh, the debt, not only on the general fund, but certainly on the enterprise funds, water and sewer. Um, uh, the goal here obviously is not to spike debt and the Capital Improvement Committee, uh, kind of achieves that by, you know, keeping an eye on it and trying to smooth out all the debt going forward. So I would say the answer to your question is, uh, I hopefully do not anticipate spikes if they are there. You know, certainly, uh, Mr. Ailes and myself, uh, will, will certainly give you a heads up on that. I, I, uh, the capital improvement plan that we have now does not, uh, go that way. I can also share with you, which I indicated in the memo, um, to pay for, it's about $71,000 if, if the, uh, city treasure goes out over 30 years at 3%. Uh, that's about five to six cents per, uh, 100 cubic feet, uh, going forward, but as , uh, Mr. Ailes already indicated, and one of the big things they'll be doing, uh, which we do every year, as you well know, we have in the fund balance of retained earnings, uh, 1.4 million. And, um, uh, they'll be using some of that to, uh, 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 smooth out the rates. I'm optimistic that, uh, the rates will probably be remaining the same as, just so you know, the rates, the current rates this year are $9.22 per 100 cubic feet, uh, and I believe that the administration will be able to keep that the same even with the authorization of this loan. So, uh, bottom line to it, uh, the capital improvement plan will avoid spikes and, uh, hopefully, uh, I do not anticipate some spiking problems going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
So if I may, Mr. President?
Of course.
Yeah, follow up with Mr. Ailes and Mr. Collins to sort of look down the road at what other kinds of projects, uh, might be occurring, say, within the five, 10-year period, which could have a, an incremental impact on increasing the rates? And maybe Mr. Ailes can talk about things that might be coming off in terms of debt burden on the enterprise fund that might counteract whatever is coming on in terms of additional expenditures that we foresee down the road.
Yeah, let me, um, let me start by addressing some of those questions, Counselor, and then I know, uh, Mr. Collins can speak to some of the, the expected projects, um, as well. But you're absolutely right. Uh, there are, it's an ebb and flow that happens every year and just as we're bringing debt on, um, in any number of our, uh, funds, we are also retiring debt, uh, in any given year. Um, and so within the water fund, for instance, we know that in FY '23, we'll be retire- retiring about $90,000, uh, dollars in annual debt payments. So this amount actually fits in nicely with that with, uh, a, a two-year span where we'll lead to kind of buffer those, those cost increases, but then it'll, it'll slide back in line. Um, and so we do that between the two accounts regularly, like I alluded to before. In terms of projects, um, that we know about, um, if you refer to, uh, the earlier capital plan that we submitted last year, um, nothing much has changed in the sense of projects related to the water and that we anticipate. One of the major ones, uh, that Commissioner Collins can certainly speak to, um, that we anticipate, uh, relates to water meter replacement. And that's for both the measuring the flow of the waters, um, which also translates to, um, the sewer, uh, infrastructure as well and how much water is actually going in the sewer. Um, and so that's our primary, uh, reporting mechanism to measure flow. Um, those will need to be replaced, um, over the next couple of years. We also, uh, have, uh, some water work that needs to be done on Stanley Street, which, uh, has already received an authorization, uh, from a previous council. Uh, so we're just awaiting, uh, some final engineering work related to that, I believe. Um, and that would be something we would undertake in the very near future. Both of those projects, by the way, are built into our long-term plan and our, our attempt to try to keep the rates, uh, from doing any spikes or, or dips. So we're layering these projects in and the timing of them is very relevant to our ability to manage this rates and not produce an unfair burden, um, to, to the users. Um, I don't know if Mr. Collins wants to add to either of those two projects. I will say, though, one more thing that we, we just need to throw out there as a caution is there are a lot of unknowns in this environment. For instance, the sewer environment, it's a very caustic environment, um, and it's possible from time to time that unforeseen issues can occur. Um, and so we also need to make sure that when we talk about fund balances and flexibility within existing operating budgets, that we keep an eye towards being able to react to potential issues that have, have been unforeseen but may occur, um, like an interceptor, like a pump station, things, things from time to time that need some work and some capital investment. So I'll stop there and, uh, let Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
All right, as Mr. Ailes pointed out, the, uh, wa- the water meters will be probably the next thing we would ask the city council for authorization on, um, and hopefully within the next fiscal year, because it is, uh, it's our cash register, it's how, probably how we pay the bills. And, um, we've gotten, honestly, we've probably gotten 10 years of life out of the last water meter project, um, beyond their actual rated life expectancy. They've served this very well. Um, the technology was sort of, uh, very stable, not very sexy, but very stable. Um, the next iteration, one of the things we were waiting for is for the technology and the marketplace to stabilize a little bit. And we are at that point, we've been replacing, you know, onesie twosie or at, as the, as the new meters are installed, um, installing water meters that actually have cell phones built into them. And that does a whole bunch of things. It eliminates the need for us to drive around in a van and pick up readings. It allows us to do, you know, um, instantaneous reads, anytime maybe there's a closing for a household. It allows the resident to set up a, uh, their own portal to their water meter and get alerts. Maybe they're on vacation and their, and their water starts, they have, they have a leak in their home. Um, and you can set thresholds and whatnot whereby, um, it can notify you if you have a toilet leak in the night, things like that. So it'd be a huge, huge benefit to, to the water and sewer utilities, plus, uh, all of our customers as well. Um, so that's probably one of the next, um, things we'll be coming before the council for. Um, in terms of large capital improvements, we do have a, a water system master plan. There's been a number of things that we've constructed, uh, Haskell Street Water Main, the cement lining out on Grapevine and Hull and Hart, um, the painting of the water tower, these projects that are all been completed and, you know, in our, in our rearview mirror and in, in the debt schedule as we speak. Um, looking forward, um, one of the projects that we know will be up and coming is we have the reconstruction of Bridge Street. Um, and we'll, we'll, in the, in the next coming couple of years, we'll have to talk about, um, doing something with a water main out on Bridge Street just to clean things up, um, before we invest a substantial sum of money in the road surface. Um, but other than that, it's, it's, uh, once, once we complete those, um, projects, um, we don't have anything specifically, any major project specifically identified. It's more routine replacement of services, gates, hydrants and smaller diameter mains. Um, in the, in the downtown area, we just, we have a goal of, you know, each time we pave a road, we like to, if, if possible, we like to replace all the water services, get rid of any iron services and upgrade, update everything to copper. Um, and if we have streets with smaller six-inch water mains where we have, um, any question of the fire capacity, we like to upgrade those to eight. There's a substantial difference in the increase in flow when you do that. Um, so, um, we, you know, I, I think we have only a few very large, you know, the, the Bridge Street and the water meters are the, and the multimillion dollar projects that are ahead of us. And then other than that, it's, uh, a series of smaller, more modest products, projects that can be managed internally, generally constructed with city forces where if we can do it, like, um, the Stanley Street replacement, all we're, all we're looking for there is we're, we're, um, the authorization allows us to buy the pipe and we'll put it in the ground ourselves. A very capable crew, um, very capable engineering staff. And so we like to try to do these projects in-house as much as possible, which ends up, uh, costing probably less than a third of what it would cost if we went out and put that project out to bid for a contractor and, and did outside engineering as well. So it was very.
All set, Counselor Hausman?
Uh, yes, uh, yeah, I think it basically answers my question. I mean, there, there are projects in the pipeline, uh, but, uh, based upon what Mr. Ailes is saying, he's confident that the ebb and flow of projects coming on and dropping off will give us a, a, a stable, um, water sewer, uh, rate for the taxpayers. Um, now, so this is just one of, one of those, uh, projects that fits into that, uh, basic plan, um, and so that's really the kind of reassurance I was looking to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Flaherty?
I'm all set.
You're all set. How about Counselor Rand?
Thank you. Uh, my question is, uh, just to clarify a little bit, and you may have already, uh, said this at the beginning and I missed it, but the additional 6,850 feet is that you said, um, Commissioner Collins, you said that's i- an additional scope to what the original project was? Can you just describe which extra 6,850 feet that is? Is that from Bow to the bridge or what exactly, what part of the project is that added part?
The, that, that actual number is the original order description of the project. So roughly from Lennox Street to the bridge is roughly 6,800 feet. Um, what we, what we have here is more of a death by paper cut, um, where we, you know, there's 50 feet on a side street, 100 feet to reconnect something, uh, further than we thought, other utility conflicts that have caused us to go around, um, or services that we had to go back and kill that are abandoned, that are just sort of ticking time bombs for us. They don't, these are service, don't go anywhere, but they're still live. Um, so just things that, uh, cropped up along the way, little by, one major thing, it's just an extra valve here, replacing a hydrant there, um, things that were not necessarily anticipated in the original scope. So there's, there's hundreds of small things that added up to a, to a decent sum of money, um, that were, that the contractor was not initially required to do, but we've, um, we feel that if, if we add them to the job, we will get a much better value for the city. We, we trust the contractor, the prices are good, um, their quality is, 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 uh, beyond compare, so it's, you know, we feel, um, that it's a good value for the city to add these additional items to the scope.
Thank you. Um, I do have one more question, if that's okay?
Of course.
Who is the contractor?
N. Greenwich and Sons.
What, can you say that again?
N. Greenwich and Sons.
Okay, thanks.
It's all the, well, actually, it's all the, they say it's all the red trucks you see out on the street, but Marquesi's trucks are red as well with the same color lettering, so they all look the same out there right now.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Perry, do you have anything to add before? I know we heard from you once. Do you have anything to add before we close our public hearing?
Uh, Mr. President, the only thing I, I'd suggest, uh, there's nothing to add other than as your analyst, given the totality of all the information provided, uh, it would be my recommendation to the council to approve this request.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Um, hearing no further questions or comments, I'll close this public hearing and then I will ask, um, Ms. Kent to do a roll call vote. Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the mayor's request for the loan authorization of $1.4 million for ongoing water main work around downtown. So moved. Ms. Kent? Second?
Second.
Second.
Perfect. Ms. Kent, how about a roll call?
Amy?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Frady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes, now back to our regular, uh, agenda. Um, communications from other city offices and boards, I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from, on order number 107A from Planning Board Direct, Planning Director Darlene Nguyen.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Frady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes. Uh, Ms. Kent, could you please, uh, read, uh, Ms. Nguyen's, uh, letter?
You want me to read the whole letter?
Let you want me to do it?
I did not get the letter. Let me just, I have it on my phone.
No, how about we do this, uh, Ms. Nguyen is on the, uh, on the line right now. No, how about we do this, Ms. Nguyen is on the line right now. Maybe Darlene, could you summarize it?
I am happy to.
And thank you for having me on for so long.
Yeah, no problem. There's lots of interesting stuff on. So, sorry that it was so long. I was hoping it would be a shorter endorsement or recommendation. But this letter relates to an open space residential design project subdivision and site plan review project that the planning board reviewed in 2016. So four years ago now. And there was a bit of a delay in getting it built and moved on towards construction. So, but one of the components of the OSRD is that the developer has to set aside 50% of the buildable lot area as an open space parcel, which is, has to be conveyed to either the city, another nonprofit land preservation agency, or in some situations, it remains in a private HOA. So as part of the planning board approval for this parcel, which is a six lot subdivision that is currently under construction, they set aside a 3.29 acre parcel to convey to the city its wooded area in Rylside between Sunny Crest and Hayes Avenue. And that's a very typical way that the OSRD has been operated. I'm trying to remember, I didn't pull up my chart, but I think since that OSRD ordinance has been in place, I think we've preserved or, you know, had approximately over 30 acres have been preserved as open space, whether or not they've gone back to the city, or there's a couple parcels that have stayed as private open space. So that's the intent of the ordinance. And we're, you know, meeting that, we allow homes to be built on smaller lots in order to preserve that open space. So that's just a summary for some of the people who are new to this. Because I think we are on number seven or eight. And so this, actually, they tried to convey the open space in 2017. And the, there were a number of encroachments. A couple of the abutters had basically, you know, stored boats or lawn furniture or cars or, and in some cases, things like stairs, like actual structures, were on the property that was to be conveyed to the city. And the city, you know, it went to legal affairs and the city said, well, we can't take it until the encroachments are cleared. And then the developer kind of worked on another project for a while and finally came back. And he has notified all of the abutters that they had to remove any of their materials and that they would no longer be able to access that land, that it was being given to the city. And so I went out to the site on Saturday to verify that. And so they took out the stairs, you know, there were physical concrete stairs that were on the property that were going from one yard to this lot of land. Most of the materials have been removed, the large materials, you know, there's still a horseshoe pit that's there and a couple other things. There's some trash and debris that's, you know, in the, in the open space generally kind of bottles and cans and things like that. And then the only other issue related to that was that since 2017, somebody bought one of the properties and actually started work in the wetland that is in the open space in the backyard, which wasn't even their property. It was the developer's property. And so that was identified in the fall, winter. And they're actually under a conservation commission order. They've cleaned the land, they've removed, removed all the fill and anything they added to the land. And the only thing left they have to do is replant it. And there's a two-year maintenance review period with the conservation commission once they do that. So that has been addressed as well. See, the other things that we look at when we look at open spaces, whether or not we think that there's any likelihood of environmental contamination, or look at conveying space land to the city. In this case, the land has been a wooded area, you know, since I looked on the plan back in 1947 in a residential community, there's no suspicion that there was any dumping or any other, you know, kind of environmentally threatening activity that rises to the level of doing an environmental assessment. So there was no environmental assessment done for the property. And, you know, we've taken, the city has taken other properties under these parameters, but I wanted to just make that clear. And then the other criteria that we look at is tax liens, or taxes, and whether or not there's any liens on the property. And I did confirm with the tax collector today that there are some, they have not paid their quarter four taxes yet on this property or the other property that they own, which is over on Webster Ave, the developer owns, in the farms. And there are some Q3 taxes that are still not paid on one or other of those properties. There's a handful in each, in each development. So I made in my letter some suggestions that, you know, I think that the developer is working earnestly and duly to complete the project. They need to convey the land in order to sell any of the houses. And that's one of the requirements. And they are looking to close on the first house, which is constructed and is under purchase and sale agreement in June. So I would be comfortable recommending that the city council approve this conveyance with the conditions that I put in my letter, which relate to, one is that relates to the conservation commission approval, which isn't really a condition because that exists and is binding already. The conservation commission will continue to monitor that area that has been approached on. Two is that the council requests that the developer formally put on notice the owner of 17 Hayes Ave, who parks their car on the property, that is officially a trust pass. They have warned, they have told that person before. And the car keeps coming back. And that would be something the city would have to determine in the future if they want to enforce. And then, so number three, that the council could ask the applicant to make one more sweep of trash and debris prior to a closing with the city. Number four, that the applicant has paid all of their taxes that are due up to the time of the closing. And I know the city has given some leeway for quarter four tax payment, but I think it makes sense that taxes should be current and paid. And then finally, another part of the planning board decision, which I forgot to mention, is that the, as part of these OSRDs, developers can opt to submit an endowment to the city to take care of future maintenance. And this goes into a general fund, since this open space parcel was designated to go to Parks and Recreation, that pot of money, so they offered $5,000 that will go into the Parks and Recreation Fund. We're not actually expecting to do anything on this property. There is a drainage pipe on this property. There might be tree work or other maintenance things over time that need to be addressed on the property. And that's generally what the endowment is for. So I think that was, that was the fifth condition. And they noted in their letter, when they acknowledged in their letter that they will pay the 5,000 prior to a closing with the city.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Very thorough. So your recommendation would be to attach your letter that we've designated 107A to the, 107, the communication from Morris, Rossi, and Hayes, and then we can approve it when we get to it during this meeting?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And for Gold Star, I need you to identify the city council who was so instrumental in getting the OSRD ordinance passed.
That would be Council Hausman.
Yes, it would. Thank you, Council Hausman. You've been working so hard on behalf of the city for so long. Any questions for Ms. Nguyen before we let her go? It's nice, the later it gets, the fewer questions we get.
I'm going to stay on for Briscoe too, just in case you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Any questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to attach late file 107A to order number 107.
I so move that as a condition to the acceptance of the parcel.
Thank you, Councilor. A second?
Second.
In favor? I mean, I'm sorry, here we go, I'm back to regular. Pre-COVID. Ms. Kent, roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman? Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 107 from Morris, Rossi, and Hayes for the open space at Sunny Crest Circle.
I would entertain a motion to accept the open space donation as long as everything in Planning Director Darlene Nguyen's letter is met.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Next up, Ms. Kent.
Order number 108 is for an application for renewal for a secondhand junk dealer license for GameStop, Inc.
It is a renewal, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes.
Order number 109 for petition for national grid for Williams Street.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for Monday, June 1st at 7:10 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes.
Order number 110 from Glowski for an application for a special permit for Briscoe Village, LLC.
I would entertain a motion after I hear from Council Flowers. Council Flowers.
Thank you. Mr. President, I need to recuse myself from votes pertaining to Briscoe. So I'm just not sure the best way to do that on a virtual call.
Go get a snack or go play catch with Emma.
Okay. All right, I'll come back later.
All right. Give us just a moment. Okay, on this order, I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for June 15th, 2020. That is our second meeting in June, for 7:15 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
And I would also ask that that be referred to the planning board, the parking and traffic commission, and the design review board. And that motion carries eight to zero. Ms. Nguyen, do you have anything to add, or did I miss anything?
Nope. Thank you, Council. You got it.
All right. Trying to pay attention at this late hour. Ms. Kent?
Order number 111, application for a Hockes and Pelzels license is a renewal for Steven Wright. The chief did not sign off on it yet. I sent it over. He may have sent it back to me, but I wasn't in the office today.
It's a renewal, so I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes.
And to be clear, I won't obviously give one or more because if the chief doesn't sign off on it.
Right.
Just to make.
We'll get it back.
Okay. And order number 112, application for an ice cream truck for a license for Steven Wright, and it's also a renewal.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes.
Order number 113, application for a secondhand junk dealer license for Beverly Coin Jewelry Records and Estate Appraisals, and this is also a renewal.
Motion to approve that request?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. And we have one thing coming out of committee?
Yes.
Ms. Kent?
Order number 99. It is for the reelection of the clerk of committees.
And that's, we got a letter from support from Mayor Cale on that. So I would entertain a motion to approve that order.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
And Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Great job tonight, everybody. We got a lot accomplished. And everybody asked some great questions, especially during the two public hearings. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I want everybody to thank Council Ran for all the work that she has done in terms of anything that has to do with COVID-19 here in the city of Beverly. She's worked with almost every committee or every organization that is trying to figure this all out. And today, she sent an email to Ms. Kent to forward to all of us on a guidance to municipalities on enforcing COVID-19 orders. Everybody should take a look at it in case any of their resident constituents or business constituents have any questions about what the next steps are. Does anybody have anything to add? Okay, nothing to add. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, June 1st at 1:00 PM. I would entertain a motion.
Council Ams.
Oh, Council Ams, I'm sorry. Council Ams, you have something?
Yeah, just real quick, I second your words of appreciation for Council Ran. She has really worked oh so hard. And I would just like to remind everyone that it is teacher appreciation month. And so anyone out there who wishes to honor a teacher, I have two other fellow councilors here that I've spent some time with Bev out on. It's a great way to show the people who work for our school system some appreciation. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Council Ams. I'm sorry that I missed you. So we'll go back to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will entertain, excuse me, I so moved.
Second.
Come on, I can eat my dinner.
A moment of levity.
Second, Council Rand.
Council Flowers, I think, seconded it, but I'd be, I'd second it again.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
And yes, thank you, everyone. Good night.
Council President? I just want to add, it is great to see my fellow councilors, even if it is only virtually. It's been a long time since we've been together and I really appreciate everyone's good work and it's, it's just nice to see everyone in this socially isolated environment that we're in, so greetings.
Well, and I just want to tell you that when I stood up to recuse myself, Emmett, who is still up, was very concerned why I wasn't allowed to vote and assumed you were all voting something about me behind my back. He was very worried. So for all I know, for all I know, you did.
Thank you. Nice to see everybody.
Bye, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye. Good night.